We're good, right? Okay. This meeting is called to order at 2:30. We need 2.2 roll call establishment of quorum.
So we are aware that student trustee Maria Marquez will join at 5:30. And trustee Aguilar and trustee Nicolau have said that they will be arriving during closed session. So we'll make note of that. Trustee Davis.
Present.
Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Hinton.
Present.
Vice President Richards.
Here.
And board president Bex.
Present.
Quorum is established.
Okay. And we do not have anyone participating via Zoom, so we can skip 2.3, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any statements of conflict? This is 2.4. Going once, going twice. Okay. No statements of conflict. Do we have any public comments? This is the time for public comments. No?
There's no raised hands in Zoom. And then just with regards to statements of conflict, maybe at the beginning of the 5:30 session?
I'll do it again. I think it's written again. All right. We are going to adjourn to closed session. We will be discussing 3.1 pursuant to G C section 54957, discipline dismissal release reassignment appointment evaluation. 3.2 conference with labor negotiators employee organizations C S E A. 3.3 is conference with labor negotiators employee organizations Y F A. So those are our topics. We will now reconvene to closed session.
March 8th, board meeting, open at 5:30. And we will go to 4.2, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I'm going to ask Nancy to lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at 4.3. I'll turn to Graciela to do the roll call.
Student trustee Maria Marquez.
President, any yes to all three?
Thank you.
Trustee Aguilar.
Present.
Trustee Davis.
Present.
Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Hinton. Trustee Nicolau.
Here.
There's President Richards.
Here.
And President Beggs.
Present.
Form is established.
There is no report out from closed session, 4.4. 4.5, are there any changes in the order of business? All right, none there. 4.6, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes of the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on February 13th.
So moved.
We have the motion. Can you take the roll call?
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Garrett.
Aye.
Hinton.
Aye.
Nicolau.
Aye.
Richards.
Yes.
Beggs.
Aye.
The vote is 7-0, motion carries.
All right, we are up to public comments, 4.7. I have received one form from Nancy Portius-Thomas. Are you here? There you are. Do you like to come up and speak to us now?
Good evening. Good evening. Is that okay? Should I bring this up? There we go. I have a couple of questions, and I don't know that you respond to questions, but based on some of the last portions of the meeting from last month that Ms. Tran brought up regarding international students, or the possibility of international students coming to this district. So my question, as you mentioned, and I may have gotten this wrong, but I believe you said either in the waiting or available to come to the United States, to this community, are 6,000 students from India and 6,000 students from Dubai. I certainly can't understand why students would want to come to this community.
You get closer to the mic.
Excuse me. Do I hold it? I can hold it. And as I mentioned during my last session here, I do come from an area where there are And as I mentioned during my last session here, I do come from an area where there are a lot of international students. The Monterey Peninsula, we have a huge number of international students that bring a lot to the community. Mostly those students are guests from countries who want to augment their military training, language training. And we have very fine institutions there for that purpose. So in this area, I know that we have, you know, our primary industry is ag. And I know that there are a lot of countries around the world now that are looking to advance their technology in biodiversity and such, in agriculture. So I, again, can understand why they might want to come to this Samaking Valley. So I'm just wondering, does the, if that is all accurate, is there a strategic plan that's been developed by the district to invite that number of students? And will those students be sprinkled around the entire valley? Will they be assimilated here locally? The reason for that question is that I know, and I have a lot of experience in working with international students on the Monterey Peninsula. Most of the students that I've met over the 30 years have been highly motivated, been highly educated. And they come and bring a very competitive spirit to the institution, whichever one it happens to be. So if, in fact, we are bringing that number of students to our community, what are we doing at elementary, high school levels to augment the education so that we would be very competitive with those, our students would be competitive with those students? And also, do we have relationships with business that have been established by the district that would incorporate these students? All of the students are the students that are local to this area already, or a combination? Because, at least from a business perspective, I know that business people will want the most competitive student. They will want the best students coming out of this institution. And so I just want to make sure that there is a coordinated plan with the business community that, hopefully, you're part of the Stanislaw 2030 initiative so that we can be really strengthening those bridges between the business community and the college to the benefit of our students locally. Thank you.
The question is, this is a non-agendized item, so what is the rule? I know that the Board is not supposed to comment, but I don't know what the rule is for our president.
Because it's not on the agenda, it's really not the time for a discussion. But you could direct staff to work, to talk this with, talk about this with her directly outside of this meeting.
Okay.
Or you could agendize it for a later time.
Okay. Is the Board okay with talking, are you okay with that? Yeah. So let's have you talk to her about it. That would be great.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Is it on? Okay. Thank you so much. So there is a miscommunication in that. Oh, no, later, later, later.
Speaking of miscommunication. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
There are, but for an agendized item, so I will.
Okay, so you'll alert me? All right. Okay, so now we're up to five.
There is a raised hand via Zoom. From Twila Laster, if it's on a non-agendized item, then it would be appropriate. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and show your video if you'd like.
Hello, thank you. This is Twila Laster. It is an agendized item, so I will wait until eight point one to make up the comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now up to five point one, the Board Finance Committee report. Trustee Darren.
Sad to report for all of you that there was no Board Finance Committee this past month. Our next regular Finance Committee meeting will be Monday, May first, 2023, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We are up to five point two, the Board Policy Committee report.
We met on Monday. It was with, nice to have participation in questions, and I'm glad to see some of you that are here to talk on eight point one. We have three areas that we're bringing to a vote today. We asked the Board to pass them through. And that's really, we've got, our next meeting will be on, I believe it's the third? No, May first.
I don't remember the date, but I know.
Oh, wait a minute. Policy is April 10th. Sorry about that. So we'll be meeting at one o'clock on the 10th and hope to see you all there. And Kim, do you want to do anything now or do it when we go? Okay, I'd like to follow up on eight point one, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at reports. An information item six point one is the accreditation updates from Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. Welcome.
President Beggs and Board members and Chancellor Young, we're here to give an update on accreditation from Modesto Junior College and Columbia College. I'm Patrick Betancourt, Accreditation Liaison Officer from Modesto Junior College. My colleague.
Hello, I'm Raylene Juarez, and I'm the interim vice president at, of instruction at Columbia College.
I'm Mike Smedshammer. I'm the Distance Education Coordinator at Modesto Junior College.
And he saved my life many times.
He's incredibly helpful. I'm Aisha. Nice to meet you all. I co-chair the IEACR accreditation committee at MJC.
We have the Modesto slide up. So just to give some, to give some background, we started in earnest in July of '22 with training from ACCJC Vice President. Catherine Webb came to Modesto Junior College and trained a large number of us on the process of analyzing standards and how to best gather evidence that supports those standards. You remember that in November, we met with you in the conference room, and we went through that two-hour session or more, gathering evidence on the Board's standard. Well, the college was doing the same work with all of the other standards. And then in fall of '22, the Institutional Effectiveness and Accreditation Committee invited the co-chairs of each standard to come and present what they had found. They presented on what went well in gathering evidence, where they found any gaps, where they had any concerns, and it gave the college campus, the community, to engage in the governance process with the committee around effect, around accreditation. And then I think, Aisha.
That's when we get to spring of '23, and we had a little bit of a bump in the road with our position of the president at MJC being empty for a bit. Things kind of went on a standstill. And then our current interim president, Dr. Redwing, was our former faculty accreditation co-chair. And so it took us a little bit of time to identify a replacement, get them appointed through the Senate, and get back on track with our accreditation process, which we're making good progress on now. We were able to, Mike was really wonderful about stepping on board, and he was officially appointed to be our new accreditation co-chair at the March second Senate meeting.
So currently, we're focused on two parts of accreditation. One is identifying gaps, and that's anywhere where the college may not be currently exactly up to standard. We want to identify those areas now so that we have an hour, we have a year to improve ourselves before the visiting team arrives. And we're also drafting responses to the standards, which Mike will talk about.
Yeah, so when, when Chad moved out of the position, and I went to Patrick's office, and, and we were just kind of talking, and he said, would you step into this? It was kind of, hit me like a little bit of a jolt because there's a lot to catch up on. But I've spent the last month reading other accreditation reports from other colleges and getting good suggestions and ideas. And I've just drafted my first section and submitted that for Patrick's review. So we're off to the races now. So that's about where things are.
So for Columbia College, I think our bump in the road has been the weather and some of the delays that we've experienced the last couple of weeks. On our first slide that you're going to be seeing this evening, we actually have a tri-chair format. So along with myself, we have Alyssa Creighton, who is a curriculum process specialist, and she's chairing along with me as a classified professional. In addition to Colin Thomas, who is an instructor of chemistry, he is the faculty chair. So the three of us together are leading this adventure of accreditation. And to the next slide. Very similar to MJC's timeline, we had workshops in the summer. We were involved with the board session in the fall. And here's just an update of where we are at as of March. So we have completed our evidence collection. And really, right now, it is outlining our standards for the writing. And we are composing our responses, identifying the gaps, just like MJC is currently doing right now. And along the way, we're finding that we're needing to gather some additional evidence. And some of that is due to the gaps that we have identified, such as a reaffirmed mission, vision, and core that will be coming soon. And so this is giving us time to just keep improving what we are doing and writing that in the ICER itself. We're actually also meeting with Dr. Catherine Webb, who is our ACCJC Accreditation Liaison, in fact, that's tomorrow. And the tri-chairs, we're discussing the format of how we are responding to the standards. We wanted to do a little brainstorming with her. And then what is new in our timeline that wasn't necessarily there before is that we have created these check-in days for the month of March. And this is for the tri-chairs to touch base with the team leads, just to see where we are at with our drafts and the progress being made. And they will be for the next three Fridays. And we'll schedule a time, whether that's Zoom, or a phone call, or in person, to just touch base and get a pulse of our next steps. Are there any questions?
Sounds great. Thank you. All right, we're at six point two, the Association Reports. The first one, I believe, and I always get these out of order, is President Z Harmon, ASC president.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Young, college presidents, and attendees. Second winter has officially arrived at Columbia. Since I last spoke to you, feet have, a feat of snow have been dumped on our scenic campus. And while this is great for some lovely winter photos, it has caused quite a stir for us. In the last month, Columbia has had nine days of instruction affected by a delayed opening, early closure, or total closure. While nine may not seem like a lot, five of those days occurred on a Monday or a Wednesday, meaning students have not been to some classes in two weeks. Even today, as you have heard, we had a partial closure. The college continues to evaluate and learn from each closure and delay. While these closures have impacted the ASCC's ability to meet for business meetings, we have been hard at work pulling together the needed preparation for the upcoming April elections. This year, an updated constitution and bylaws will be on the ballot alongside the election of Senate positions, completing a much-needed revamp of our guiding documents. This particular venture has been a passion project of mine, so seeing it come to the finish line right alongside my own journey at Columbia is a wonderful way to end my term as ASCC president. The student survey discussed last month also needs some revisions amongst the craze of power outages and winter storm closures. So we're continuing the effort to launch in the coming days with the intention of reporting out some of our highlights at the next meeting. As always, it has been a pleasure to speak with you all, and I look forward to reporting back to you next month. And I'm also happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Nope. Thank you very much. We have no report tonight from ASMJC president Caitlin Gross. So Columbia College Academic Senate President, Lonovan Epps. There you are, in person.
Yeah, it's, the rain stopped just long enough for me to escape down the hill, and I'm crossing my fingers that I can get back home safely. But hello, everyone. Nice to see you all. So lots going on at Columbia, and I was thinking just the other day about when I was just out of graduate school, and I was working at a private college in Montana, and my experience in that as especially going out for interviews. And I, I went for an interview in the, at a small rural college in Kalispell, Montana. And in my asking them, you know, we're interviewing each other, and I say, so am I going to have some professional growth opportunities where I'm going to be able to teach a broad range of classes? Am I going to be able to be involved in committee work? And the committee was like, yeah, you're not going to be able to not do that. I passed up on that job opportunity in order to come to Columbia College, because I have pretty deep roots at Columbia College. And I guess I'm thrilled to report to you that I really know what it means to work at a university versus a private college versus a small rural college. And what it means to work at a small rural college as a faculty member is that you get to stack your hats, one on top of another. And we're all serving the college in many various ways, in addition to our full load of classes. So I've got some numbers for you. I have to keep my mathematician hat on at all times. I can't escape that. So 100% of Columbia full-time faculty are voting members on Academic Senate, unlike MJC's Academic Senate. It is a representation structure. 80% of our tenured faculty are involved on serving on faculty screening committees this semester, 80%. And some of our faculty are needed to serve on multiple committees in order to serve that need. And if I, I ran the numbers to I was like, you know, what if I look at faculty involvement for serving on administrative or classified professional screening committees? And it was 97% of faculty involved on serving on screening committees. And if you have served on a screening committee in the recent decade, you might know how much work that is to read all of those applications and the about a week of time it takes to serve on those screening committees. So it's a, it's a pretty substantial time commitment. And 80%, or 97% of our faculty have been doing that at Columbia College in this past year. 60% of our full-time faculty are serving on some kind of standing committee, and this would be the alphabet soup variety of committee. The TLC, the DE, the DFAC, the QRID, all of those standing committees. And then there's ones that get real names like Finance Committee. So, and then of those faculty, there are some who are not just serving on the one standing committee, but two or three or, and I really should not have done this, I added up the standing committees that the Academic Senate president serves on, and it was nine, but I forgot one, so it's 10. And then there's the litany of the unaccounted. And then there's the litany of the unaccounted-for, the ad hoc committees, the special programs, the curriculum activities for significant degree changes or additions, overseeing curriculum for our orphaned program, not orphaned, the programs without full-time faculty overseeing the curriculum, shortened to orphaned program. Mentorship outreach programs, professional development serving on outside of professional organizations that affect us all at the state or national level that still affects the district. Right? All of these things above and beyond are contractual obligations of professional involvement. And this is all to say that in the balance of things, in our FTES/FTEF, did I get all those letters right? Yes. In the ratio of saying, how productive are we? Columbia faculty, we don't match our MJC big sister as far as sheer numbers of students or having the humongous wait lists. But when it comes to overall involvement in serving the district by participating in shared governance and professional obligations, Columbia faculty involvement is unsurpassed. There isn't room for a faculty member at Columbia College to just teach like what could happen at a bigger university, as I've experienced in my own career. I have some special shout-outs to a couple of faculty that are, have gone above and beyond the above and beyond, above and beyond. Tom Hofstra for spearheading the proposed Bachelor's Degree in Cooperative Land Stewardship. That application has been submitted. The fire guys, Chief Shane Warner and Andy Van Hoogman, who you saw last time, and I didn't get them give their shout-out where they were still how here. They're working on proposal for bringing a fire tower to the training site to better serve that growing program and with CalFire too, right? Am I, okay, with CalFire. Stephanie Beaver-Guzman recently finished writing a proposal for the Culturally Responsive Pedagogy Grant. Colin Thomas, who is continued work on writing the accreditation report with Ray Lean at Columbia. Congratulations to Brian Green on being elected as the first YFA president from Columbia. And to our classified professionals who make everything happen. I especially have to thank Alyssa Creighton and Jerry Porschow for their endless hours in supporting faculty and in supporting students. In our next round of meetings, I will be able to give you the results of our faculty leadership elections, curriculum chair, among other things. But we're still, we're still in that. But you guys, next meeting, I think I'm most excited about getting to hear all the contract approvals for the new faculty since we're right in that screening committee, first and second level interviews coming to board, like bringing on these new faculties, especially so many faculty at Columbia is absolutely thrilling. As Z just said, we've had nearly two weeks of campus delays and closures related to our record-breaking storms. I'm sure you guys have seen the pictures of things like Dodge Ridge just reading the 500 inches of snow mark. And, you know, my coworker, who is this tall with this much snow at her house, carefully digging each other out of the snow and making our ways to campus as is safe. And our students are stuck too. So faculty are working with students to make sure that assignments are met, staying on course, while still being as flexible as we need to be. Let's see, this Friday, last chance to go to Columbia College Child Development Tea Party. Hope we see you there. And also, the Dream Resource Center will be hosting their third Undocu Alley Training. And this time will be the first training where the College Freeze Legals Representation Group, called the Immigrant Legal Defense, will also be joining for answering questions. And, oh, one more thing from faculty. We are still very interested in having our board please suggest a way to get away from so many interim positions, the domino effect of interim vice president, interim dean, interim. It's a destabilizing factor. And it may be convenient to have an interim position, but it is not the best option for success. And last, I hear that we're not going to have our Columbia April meeting. I was so looking forward to hosting you at Columbia campus. I don't know if that's happening, but anyway, I hope to see you on campus soon. Is there any questions you have for me or anything I can further address?
The issue is equipment that keeps not showing up.
Yes. All right. Yes, well.
But as soon as it does.
Is there anything that I can address further?
No. Oh, yes. Can you turn on your mic?
That's what?
No, your mic was toggling on and off, so.
That it has been working on the accreditation. I know it was nothing compared to what we did when I was K-12, but I remember being on several committees, doing the ICERS and everything, and the work that it takes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that recognition.
Yep. It's a lot of work.
Anything else?
Nope.
Well, I'd like to introduce you to someone, Aisha.
Thank you for doing that. Hello.
Chancellor, thank you all for your time. I know I've brought a note pad up, but I promise it's not full.
It's your time.
I want to start by noting the momentous first meeting back on campus that our Senate had on March 2. It was our first in-person meeting in three years. It was invigorating. It was really wonderful. We, of course, you guys know this because you also use it, but AB 2449 allows us to still have the public join virtually. So we still have lots of access, but we get the benefit of meeting in person, which is great. Speaking of meeting in person, now that we're meeting in person, I would like to extend an invitation to all the trustees. We used to have a Meet Your Trustee agenda item every once in a while at our Senate meetings, and it got paused with the start of the pandemic. And so I'd like to bring that back. We only have a few meetings left this semester, but I've already spoken with Giselle, who is our next president. And we would very happily welcome each of you to attend our Senate meetings. All right, now to the Senate work that we've been doing. At our last Senate meeting on March 2, we passed Resolution S23-C, which was the resolution in support of the Latinx Comic Arts Festival. It recognized how culturally significant this event is and acknowledges the enrichment it provides our students, faculty, classified professionals, and community. And it calls upon the college and district to provide stable funding for this event and other equity-based, student- and community-centered events. Because it has that call for action, it will be going to college council and district council. But this was the only meeting that happens before Latinx Comic Arts Festival. So I figured I'd mention it here. And while I'm mentioning it, it is going to be taking place at MJC on March 17th and 18th from 11:00 to 6:00. And I know we'd all be glad to see you there. I'm excited to attend myself. We looked at our faculty hiring procedure. Our last meeting, well, we've looked at it at several meetings this semester. At this last meeting, it was pulled indefinitely to send it to a work group for further editing and to allow me to continue to work with HR to address some of the issues with the document that'll allow for more transparency, clarity with what was in our old policy and what is in the procedure, I should say, and what's in the new version that is up for approval. We also discussed the possible school separation into the School of Kinesiology and Athletics and the School of Health Professions. I called for two work groups related to this, one to review the impact of the proposed split on the academic programs and to then make a recommendation to the Senate based on their findings. And the other to develop a process for future proposed changes to schools in order to make sure that there's a thorough review and broad discussion before changes happen since the impacts can be far-reaching. Our executive nominations for the Senate have come to a close. And all of our current positions, the legislative analyst, secretary, and parliamentarian will all continue in their positions for another year. So I'd like to say thank you to Hans, Leila, and Teresa for continuing in their roles. We also have a switch happening with the VP and president position. I will be the next vice president of the Senate. And Giselle, who is our current vice president, will become the president starting in July. At our February 16 Senate meeting, we passed Resolution S23-B, which acknowledged the importance of student advocacy and participation in shared governance. The resolution acknowledges the power dynamic that students face when participating in governance and applauds their dedication to representing MJC students. And I need to read the "therefore's" from this document. So the resolution states, "Therefore, be it so resolved that MJC faculty acknowledge and applaud the bravery of ASMJC executive members and their dedication to representing MJC students, and we support their right to advocacy and their role in shared governance. Therefore, be it also resolved that faculty support ASMJC's call on Chancellor Young and the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees to act in the best interest of students. And therefore, be it resolved that faculty urge the YCCD Board of Trustees and the Chancellor to act in service of our mission to empower students, promote equity, and to act with integrity, responsibility, professionalism, compassion, and empathy." And I'll be forwarding the resolution to Graciela as well, so you can read it in its entirety. And lastly, we have a small subcommittee of the Strategic Plan Committee, who are working on finalizing a draft of our strategic plan and educational master plan that will be on our upcoming Senate Agenda Meeting next week. That concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Okay. All right. Next up is LTAC President Gillian Daly. You've been perfectly blocked.
Good evening, Chair Beggs and trustee or other trustee members. I have two items tonight. The first is talking about the leadership team members at YCCD who attended the annual ACA Conference. The 47th Annual ACA Conference took place two weeks ago, and there were 13 YCCD administrators in attendance. Oh, you couldn't hear me? Or you could hear me better? Okay, so there were 13 administrators in attendance, four directors, seven deans, and two vice presidents. I've explained this before, but I'll do it again. ACA stands for the Association of California Community College Administrators, and it is our main professional development and advocacy group across the system. Many YCCD administrators have also attended ACA Admin 101 and 201, which are week-long summer academies for administrators, the Great Deans Program, and the ACA Mentor Program. One great benefit of the leadership team members, for the leadership team members, is the annual professional education program funding, the PEP funding that we can apply for that allows us to attend important professional development opportunities. This year's ACA Conference focused on the importance of creating a sense of belonging for our students, especially for our students of color and our LGBTQ+ students, and in maintaining the momentum for transformational change within our system. Breakout sessions over three days focused on more specifics of these topics, but also work-life balance, increasing outreach and enrollment, data presentations, and legal advice based on specific scenarios. ACA attendee Sonia Oviedo, who is MJC Director of Admissions and Records, writes, "I attended a workshop that focused on the first year of management. I was able to gain insight on how other directors handled learning their new role and staff. They shared their daily routines, best practices, and ways to incorporate self-care in their busy schedules. As a new director, that was very beneficial." MJC Vice President of Student Services Andrea Wilson, who is in the building, attended the ACA Conference and writes, "ACA had excellent workshop presentations, and it was important to see what other campuses are doing and the possibilities of what could be done at MJC. Specifically, I enjoyed an after-school childcare program for students presented by Long Beach Community College. This program is specifically for school-aged children, age six and up, is an after-school program, so from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., in coordination with local school districts and nonprofits that already hold after-school programs, such as the Boys or Girls Club, with curriculum. Programs that are plug-and-play models that already exist with after-school homework programming. This could be a continuum of care for students or siblings of those in the Child Development Program, essentially having an after-school clubhouse on MJC's campus." And finally, from Martha Robles, who is the MJC Dean of the School of Fitness and Health Professions attended, and she writes, "The ACA Conference rejuvenates and inspires me and allows us to get the most up-to-date information, strategies, and ideas from peers. A must-do session is the Legal Eagles Q&amp;A each year by Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore, who respond and share challenges and treads facing community college administrators. Meeting the up-and-coming administrators who have completed ACA trainings is reassuring, and it helps to maintain, quote, 'a united leadership with endless possibilities.'" And so that's from ACA, and we all had a really great time there. So thank you for that opportunity. And then my last item, I'm titling, "Being a Middle Manager with Constant Change." So I wanted to take a moment to speak about something that everybody knows. It's a simple concept to understand. But as president of the leadership team, sometimes it's my job to get up and make vocal what everybody implicitly understands. The leadership team is made up of all the middle managers within the district. These are the people whose jobs are to take the directives of those above them, the vision of the new executive administrators coming in, and make them happen. But there are also, but these are also the people who need to support and navigate the demands and needs of all the staff and faculty who report to them while keeping the needs of students constantly in focus. Middle managers are often between a rock and a hard place, and the ones who have to facilitate difficult conversations, figure out how to get to compromise, but still try to make everyone happy and move the college and the district forward. Middle managers also live with one- or two-year contracts, most with one-year contracts. And so with all that on their plates, they live in continual job insecurity. Our leadership team, though, here, for the most part, is stable and in for the long haul, often leading the college or central services from the middle. And in the past five years, leading from the middle has become a hard reality with the constant change within the executive administrator ranks. Without stability above us, there is no one supporting your middle managers through that rock and hard place. And it has become more and more difficult to be transformational leaders in this environment. The tendency is to do the bureaucratic day-to-day work, keep your head down, and make decisions that don't involve risk. This district needs middle managers who are brave. To do the work to support student success as a middle manager takes bravery. And that's not easy when there's a lack of stability and support in the ranks above us. And that ends my report. Are there any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Next is Dimitri, YFA president.
Good evening, President Beggs, trustees, Chancellor Young. This Friday, the district and YFA negotiation teams will be back at the table. Since August 2021, the YFA team has proposed the benefits models, one of which we shared with the district team last month. We look forward to discussing that option and if presented, a model proposed by the district. Trustees, we've all Trustees, we've all been working on this issue for just shy of 19 months. And I gotta be frank, I'm sure all of you are tired of hearing me get up here month after month and mention benefits. So can we reach an agreement on a benefits model and move on? Any questions? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is CSEA President Amy Lovett. Welcome.
Good evening, President Beggs, Fellow Trustees, and Chancellor Young. March is the start of our third month of negotiations. The discussions have been very productive and fruitful, especially around Article 21, Professional Growth and Educational Opportunities, which is a perfect segue to announce that CSEA has reserved a date for the Classified Professionals Retreat on Thursday, May 18. The event will be kicking off Classified School Employee Week, CSU as we like to call it, which is May 21st through the 27th. In 1986, California Senate Bill 1552 established that the third week of, excuse me, established that the third week of each May has Classified School Employee Week in order to recognize the vital contribution of classified employees. On CSEA's website, you will find a quote from State Superintendent of Public Instruction Tony Thurman, "Meeting students' basic needs as well as their social and emotional needs has been more important than ever. Thankfully, our classified employees have made heroic efforts to step up and support California students so they can continue to learn. This year's themes captures our classified professionals quite well: indispensable, inspiring, invincible. On behalf of CSA leadership, we would like to honor our members within facilities receiving campus safety and transportation, who have been flexible and essential during the numerous campus closures, especially those classified in Columbia with the current weather situation. In a conversation with President Tran today, she had high praise for Corey Stoneham, Transportation Mechanic in Columbia. Thank you to all classified professionals for continuing to serve the needs of our students while ensuring our safety. Personally, I would like to take a moment and congratulate a member on her 26 years of service and upcoming retirement, Cindy Lovett. She is an administrative technician with Child Development Training Consortium, and for those of you that are not aware, she is my mom. She has always spoken so highly of our institution and the reason that I saw unemployment here. So congratulations to my mom, and I hope that she will be available for childcare soon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSA Chapter 420."
Right. Faculty Liaison to the Board, Alan McCusick.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Having attended the Board Policy Committee meeting on Monday, I want to again commend that committee and the board for the thorough and careful deliberation on district policy. In particular, I am referring to Board Policy 3570, Smoking on Campus, which is up for a third reading tonight. Apparently, that policy took extra due diligence because of working conditions implications, now apparently addressed. Also, the committee entertained additional comments, in addition to the many comments brought before you on this policy, and more from constituency representatives also on this policy and procedure. The draft before you represents, I believe, a broad consensus, and the board facilitated just that. Another broad-based effort that deserves commendation is the hiring of over 30 tenure-track professors at MJC. Sometime back, I was hired in what was described as a notably large group, but numbers this time are downright historical. In my own department, a screening committee is hard at work. I am not on that committee, but my understanding is that the pool of applicants is overall outstanding. What is going on across campus is a testament to our faculty hiring procedures agreed upon by the Board and the Academic Senate. Those procedures are under review, as you heard earlier, but we need to maintain what has worked so well, but update and improve. I also want to take note of the progress of late ONCECAP agreements. Of course, these agreements are of particular importance, not just to the district but to the faculty associations, and lately, there's been very significant progress. Those agreements are essential to serving our local high schools and the larger community. Finally, I want to commend MJC's interim president. My mother has an expression about someone doing as much as he is doing at this time. She would say, "He is so busy that he's meeting himself coming back." However, I have seen his mastery of multitasking before, and I have seen him deploy his adeptness at multilateral diplomacy and his encyclopedic knowledge of college programs, processes, and people before. Please consider me pleased but not surprised about his leadership of our college. Thank you again for facilitating his leadership of our college, and thank you again for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're up to 6.3 presentations from Dr. Lena Tran first, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Chancellor Young, Board Trustees, community members, and colleague. I want to start out by saying that it has truly been an adventure, is how I say, at Columbia College. And to further, just to recognize especially just the fight and flight, and truly, I want to add to, in addition to Corey, Tim, our graveyard security, literally every day for the last two weeks, they have been getting up together with me at 3:00 a.m. So we look at the weather, and then around 5:00 o'clock, that's where my administrative team comes in, the VP, the dean, security. So before our student and faculty get that announcement, whether we delay or open and we want to get out by 5:30, you could already see a lot of work is behind because we want to make sure our student gets enough notice, they're safe, and they're able to go about with that. And I really think that Columbia has a solid team to execute these emergency, and also that we really care, and there's a lot of great people to get everything working. So it's always great to see the finished product, but I do want to share what really go behind at 3:00 a.m., all the way up to when we send that. So thank you so much, Columbia College, for just sticking with me and doing the work we need to do. And so there are several great things are happening. One of the great projects that we just recently secured is $150,000 for a guided pathway alignment with the Central Valley Group, and it is so special that we'll be able to partner with Apple, the big company, Apple Education, and Somerville High School to have Apple teach our high school student how to develop apps. So what really talk about economic mobility, talk about giving our students that competitive edge where they're in a rural area and they're able to make Silicon Valley wages because of IT. So our idea is, for the next three summers, we want to put through as many students we can through that app development along with Apple. So that's an exciting project. Another one is with another company, Google, and finally, agreement is signed, is $500,000 to work with Sonora High School to introduce the Sonora High School student, again, to IT in the area of desktop support for a field and pre-apprenticeship. So we do strongly believe you learn and you earn, and idea is, if you're in a rural community, everything is reachable, especially to IT. So those are the two exciting projects that we just secured, and it's ready to go. And last month, we had a lot of question about our bookstore. So Chad, would you be able to hand? So I was, our team was able to meet with Barnes &amp; Noble. We met with our students. So basically, now the bookstore and how we service our student are very clear. There's postage everywhere on the website. It clearly tells students how they can get their book shipped for free directly to their homes, and we hear very loudly, I will work with my team on an ANNEX bookstore, meaning they really want to buy what we call merchandise, usually like t-shirt books. So we will have that up and going, but our team worked hard. We met with Barnes &amp; Noble, and we believe that we should not have any more conflict or challenges with the bookstore, and that would be posted everywhere on our website. In addition to that, good news also is our Jazz Festival will be coming back. So we'll do a shout-out to our faculty, Rod Harris. So it will be coming in April. We're so excited to bring that series back. And then lastly, we want to do a shout-out to our basketball team. Actually, we didn't go far, but we did good. We are 22-8, so congratulations to our team, our student, and that is my report from Columbia College. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, you are up next, Dr. Redwing.
Sure.
It's UTM codes, so like I just gave you the four codes. Are you tracking how many people are scanning and you see how many?
Well, we can definitely keep track with that. We haven't done it yet, or maybe, but now we can clearly say, this is how we're going to track this, how we're going to know which students are facing difficulties or how the process go. But with that, we will be able to.
Thank you. Good evening to our Board of Trustees, Chancellor Young, District Office, and everyone this evening for the opportunity to share Modesto Junior College's latest update. I would like to begin by thanking Patrick and Aisha and Mike for their presentation this evening and all the hard work they've done with accreditation and the ICER, while fully recognizing that I am the bump in the road. So thank you for your work and for your triage. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Executive Assistant Sabrina Miranda. It is Sabrina who ensures the professional and considerate treatment of just about everything that goes on through the Office of the President, and so I would just like to share with everyone this evening that simply put, without Sabrina Miranda, there is no Office of the President at Modesto Junior College. So with that recognition, here's some good news from our office that I'm excited to share with you all this month. I'll just highlight a few. There's more details in your full report, but I do want to highlight the Thursday, November 9th, MJC hosting of Beam Circular and CDFA Secretary Karen Ross. Discussions focused on regional efforts underway to advance the circular bio industry, including activation of Sanesloss 2030, its investment agenda, and the North San Joaquin Valley Bioindustrial Manufacturing Innovation Engine. In addition to that, MJC and SCOE's Career Inspiration Center partnered to host a Career Pathways Day for eighth graders at MJC's West Campus on Friday, February 10th. Students explored health, agriculture, technology, and manufacturing fields through seminars, demonstrations, hands-on learning, and my favorite, thrown soccer. On February 24th, the African-American Educational Conference was held quite successfully at MJC with over 100 attendees from local schools and community leaders. Vice President Andrea Wilson and Chancellor Young were among the participants of the conference, and the keynote speaker was from the Vice Chancellor's Office, Aisha Lo. In athletics news, 11 student athletes on the football team have signed early to transfer and play at four-year institutions. The MJC Women's Golf Team and MJC Men's Wrestling Team were both selected as Scholar Team recipients. This means that academically, the Women's Golf Team overall had a GPA of 3.76. Five of those seven students earned GPAs of 3.8 or higher. Athletically, the Women's Golf Team not only won the Big Eight, they also ended up winning the state championship. The Men's Wrestling Team finished with a 3.26 overall GPA, with nine of the 13 wrestlers above a 3.5 GPA. Athletically, the Wrestling Team finished second in their conference and qualified a record 10 student athletes for the state championship competition. Finally, in athletic news, the Women's Basketball Team qualified for this award with a 3.76 GPA and their first 20-win season in playoff bid in over a decade. So great news coming out of athletics. In other great news, Jamie DeRoyo is selected to speak at the Northwestern Athletic Trainers Association in March. Animal Science instructor of Dairy Science, Nicole Morris, has a wonderful podcast about what she does every day, and the Assert Apprenticeship Program that Todd Carrondo and Ag Mechanics is working on has another podcast to virtually help you explore some of the programs on our campus. I'd like to congratulate David Dow for his presentation at the Society for Electroacoustic Music, and Professor Ruth Loomin, who's been working with the State Sanesloss County Commission for Women and is organized in a great event at the State Theater focusing on the female immigrant experience. Posters and a panel discussion of the film Swimmers was greatly received. English Professor Joanna Isaacson had her book Stepford Daughters published. And finally, as the Academic Senate report suggests, you are cordially invited to the 2023 Latinx Comics Festival. It is the largest international gathering of Latino comic artists in California's Central Valley. It's an event where words are magic, a flood of colorful brilliance, and I will add this year funnel cakes is accented by the shine and rumble of, I think, what will be about 100 lowriders. So we hope to see you at that event. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Chancellor Young?
Thank you. I want to give an update on the presidential search. We have received submissions from executive search firms with proposals. The Board will be forming an ad hoc committee to be looking at those proposals and making a recommendation to the full Board. So we hope that it gets underway with the search firm identified. The firm will be able to help with the brochure, the description, the job expectations, and other requirements of this position. And lastly, I just want to mention, I want to thank the folks from our IT Department for continuing to work on the Menzanita Conference Room in Columbia regarding the installation of interactive technology, and it has been a long journey because we had ordered the components and paid for the components, but the components have not arrived. So, but we appreciate your effort. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So 6.4, the COVID-19 health update is presented as an informational item. It's attached to the online agenda. Same thing with the travel report, that is also attached as an information item, that's 6.5. Before we move into consent, two of our trustees were not here earlier at 2.4 when I asked if anyone had a conflict of interest, so I'm going to go back to 2.4 and ask again. Nope. Okay, good to go. So we have the consent agenda, and I believe we have somebody who wants to speak on one of those issues. So do we need to pull it, or do, can we talk about it and then still? Did I pull 7?
Have a discussion to pull it.
Okay. So I have a request to talk about 7.9, so can we pull that item from the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve consent without 7.9.
Okay. I'll suck it up. So I have a motion. Do we need to do a roll call? I can do that. This is for the...
Madam President, before we move, it is customary to recognize retirees on the personnel list. And Amy, I'm happy to hear that you found a retirement job for your mom. I was going to have you come up, but you took care of that, so thank you. It saved me the embarrassment, so thank you for taking care of that. I, I'm going to comment on her last, just so. So we have Steve Amador, 19 years of service, Dean of Career and Technical Education Economics, Department of Career and Technical Education at Columbia College. We've all seen Steve. He's made presentations. He's done outstanding work for Columbia College, the students in that rural area that are... are so deserving of a career path and higher education path. So I wish Steve all the best in his new adventure in the land of retirement. Angela Vizkara, 18 years of service, Community Education Specialist, Community Lifelong Learning, Workforce Development at Modesto Junior College. Same thing, helping our students find a path, not only to lifelong learning, but workforce and a career and a sustainable job with a good wage. Just outstanding work. And I know Angela's impacted a lot of lives, and we wish her all the best in her years of service. And finally, Cindy Lovett, 26 years of service, Administrative Specialist, Child Development Training Consortium at Central Services. I think Amy said it best. You know, the work that they do in child development and the impact it has on those kids is just, you can't put a price on that. And again, I'm happy that you have found her a job in retirement, and I hope she listens. I hope she listens. You're her new boss now. So... But tell your mom all the best, and we thank her for her years of service. And again, thank her. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve of the consent agenda minus 7.9.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
See Garrett?
Aye.
See Hinton?
Aye.
See Nicolau?
Aye.
It's President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. Motion carries.
Okay. So I would like to invite Amy Lovett back up.
Hello. And thank you for submitting 7.9 from the consent agenda. So 7.9 is about the reduction in force. District Administration has not been able to answer the question, who will be taking over the duties of our classified professional? And has any other funding sources been looked at? I'm asking the Board of Trustees for a no vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a...
Motion to approve?
To approve what? To approve the RIF? Do we have a second?
Second from Dawn Davis. We're 7.9 approving the reduction in force of the classified position.
So we need... We have a motion and a second, so we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Garrett?
No.
Trustee Hinton?
No.
Trustee Nicolau? See Richards?
No.
President Richards? President Beggs?
No.
Trustee Aguilar? And Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Vote is one in favor, six against, zero abstentions, motion fails.
So... You will follow up on that? Okay. Let me get to my next page here. All right.
Yes?
Yes, Kim. Sorry, I had to turn a bunch of pages to get to 8.1.
Good evening, trustees. Before you, we have one policy that's up for a third reading. It's 3570, smoking on campus. At the February meeting, there was a request from the trustees to receive a legal review. Lozano Smith has provided that legal review and provided some recommended revisions. At the Monday Board Policy Committee meeting, the Board Policy Committee did review those revisions and provided some additional recommended revisions. There is a clarification that needs to be made at this time regarding the policy. During the discussion, there was a question regarding if the affected constituency groups was all groups or was just regarding bargaining. We received a legal clarification today that that is inclusive of everyone. And so it's a broader, not narrow, version of just a bargaining. So I know there are going to be constituency groups that are going to be happy to hear that information. In addition to that, we do have Angelique Kramer online to provide additional clarification if there was any questions. I know Trustee Hinton said that she wanted to have some further statements made. And I know that there are some public comments regarding this particular policy. But I wanted to make sure that she got that information from the staff.
Thank you very much.
And I will step to the side to let you proceed, and then I'll return.
Okay. So I think we have many, many public comments, but I'm going to start with Chelsea King.
Hello. You guys probably know me by now, but I'll introduce myself again. My name is Chelsea King, and I am a Coordinator of the Young Adults Fighting Tobacco Coalition and a Program Assistant for the California Health Collaborative. I'm here today, along with many others, to discuss the importance of allowing your campuses to be able to decide whether or not they would like to go smoke-free. The policy before you will allow you, each of your campuses, to decide what is best for their campus community. As you have heard, or as you will hear, MJC has wanted to become a smoke-free campus for many, many years. And this policy will finally allow them to do so. All of the hard work of students, faculty, and community members will finally be awarded with the passage of this policy. It's important to remember that all UCs and CSU's are smoke-free. So you must ask yourself why the health of a student that attends a UC or CSU is better protected than students that attend your campuses. This policy can change that and help bridge the gap in health equity many community colleges students face. I have lived in this community my entire life, as has my father, who attended MJC when he was a young adult. My father smokes, and he has been suffering with this addiction since he was 14 years old. I often think about how different his life would be if he had attended MJC and had been a smoke-free campus. My father has wanted to quit smoking for many, many years. And if MJC had been smoke-free during that time, when he was a young man, he may have been able to do so. But now, after many years of smoking, each day is a struggle as he tries to find a way to quit. You can be the change in this community. You can show that your students' health matters and that you will support them throughout their educational journey. This policy will allow each campus to decide what is best. It will allow Columbia to keep their limited designated smoking areas, and it will also allow MJC to become a smoke-free campus after many years of fighting to be able to do so. Please listen to your students, faculty, and community, and let's all work together to create a safer and healthier environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next, I have Morgan Haydock.
Good evening, and thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Morgan Haydock. I'm a student at Modesto Junior College. I've been here for three years. I'm speaking to you tonight to urge you to pass the proposed new smoking policy that would allow campuses to ban smoking. In the time that I've been at MJC, I've been exposed to secondhand smoke more times than I can count. At MJC, you can't sit at a venture picnic table without inevitably getting engulfed by a cloud of cigarette smoke or vape smoke. Consistently throughout my time at MJC, it has been myself and my peers who have had to leave outdoor spaces on our own campus because there's no policy in place to protect our health. It's not fair that a majority... It's not fair that a majority of the student population does not smoke, but still has to suffer the consequences that smoking can bring in order to accommodate those that do. I think we can all agree that students should be able to get their education in a healthy environment. Right now, only students at UCs and CSU's are guaranteed a smoke-free campus. Is the health of students at those colleges more worthy of protection than that of myself and my peers? Tonight, you're going to hear from several people who are going to talk about the harmful health impacts of smoking and the impacts that a smoke-free policy can have. We all know secondhand smoke can harm non-smokers. We all know that smoking is linked to cancer. We all know that smoking is not safe, and it is not healthy. So I'm not here to cite statistics or give you more facts. We know them already. I'm asking you to take action. It is time that the colleges in the Yosemite Community College District have the right to protect their students' health. I ask that you please vote for the new smoking policy so that all students can have a safer and healthier future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to mispronounce this. Finn... Can't read the writing. Leja or Seja?
Seha.
Say it again, please.
Seha.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for trying. It's a difficult last name to pronounce. Yes. Hello, Board, and thank you for your time. My name is Finn Seha, and this is my second semester here at MJC. I've lived in this area my entire life, actually being born here in Modesto, but being raised in Turlock, which is about 20 to 30 minutes away. For a large majority of my life, I have worked in tobacco use prevention programs and have always maintained a unique outlook as a student. As a student, I have the ability to talk to my peers in a very informal fashion, which allows for free-flowing discussions about issues that they face on their own campuses and issues that they would wish would be changed in the education systems around them. Currently, all UCs and CSU's are tobacco and smoke-free, while only 62% of California community colleges and only 40% of rural community colleges are smoke and tobacco-free. A vast majority of general population students go on to attend community colleges. From my high school experience, a large amount of Turlock High School's class of 2022 attended community colleges across the state, while a good portion of those students chose MJC to continue their education. These students are now faced with issues regarding secondhand smoke, which there is no safe level of exposure to. Even brief exposure could cause health problems. All extensive exposure could lead to problems such as lung cancer, strokes, heart disease, asthma attacks, or even death. I've only been attending MJC for about eight months, but I've already seen at least a dozen events held on both West and East Campus. Some of those events are open to the public and/or are catered to younger crowds, which means that family members and children attend. Some of those kids are not old enough to understand that a lot of the things they see in public or other things that they see people doing are right versus wrong. Those children see college students smoking on college campuses. As a child entering a college campus and seeing a college student smoking, that could leave the idea that smoking is okay, that there's no danger to it. Additionally, if someone is smoking on a campus during a family-oriented event, it takes away any right a child has to have never inhaled a secondhand smoke to begin with, which is exactly why I'm asking you to pass smoke-free policies, which are necessary to protect the health and well-being of every student, faculty member, and guest that visit community college campuses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Finn. Next up is Alejandro... Wayne Rostro? Say it for me. Buen rostro. French is my language. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Board. My name is Alejandro Rostro. I'm the College Program Coordinator with the California Youth Advocacy Network. I'm here to speak on behalf of the BPAP 3570. So we have... So within our work, we provide technical assistance, support, and education to college and campus partners within the field of control sensation and treatment. And with that, we're spiritually enlightened and assured to the fact that campuses can be more functional, equitable, and conducive when students aren't exposed to the negative health effects and norms that smoking on campuses in their learning, working, and living environments causes. Smoke-free policy isn't an attempt to alienate or punish users for their use. It's rather to partner with them for ensuring healthier futures within their careers, educations, and lives. Smoke-free campuses do make up a majority of California colleges with totaling 62% as of 2022 climbing, whilst 100% of UCs and CSU's have been smoking tobacco-free 11 years and five years ago, respectively. This isn't a matter of putting more work onto the campuses, rather giving them the opportunity and the authority to bring themselves up to speed with the efforts and experiences that are benefiting the majority of the California community colleges at Stans. We have a plethora of campus, community, and statewide partners that are already willing and ready to assist in the process of establishing the work that is needed to implement and maintain smoke-free policy on these campuses. For example, the previous incumbent of the California Community College, Chancellor Chair, Chancellor Oakley, previously issued a memo to all campus trustees until 2018 to support and adopt and implement a smoking tobacco-free policy until 2018. MJC has a longstanding investment and support of adopting and implementing smoke-free policy. And while Columbia doesn't presently have that capacity to move in that direction, the proposed policy doesn't force them to do so, rather it gives them the opportunity to do so if they choose to at a later time without avoiding any redundant work or delays in that work. For example, a variety of districts in California have already done similar improvements within their policy, such as San Jose Evergreen Community College District, Hern Community College District, Los Angeles Community College District. And in the past, we've also had community college districts, such as Los Rios, Peralta, support these policies that support campuses in adopting their own campus-wide policies. And then, as a result, they've seen that these campuses do usually head in the direction of district-wide policy adoption. Tobacco control is an equity issue at its core, so we see it continuously impacting communities that are already vulnerable and have compromised lives and lived experiences for the sake of profit generation. Smoking has been studied and shown to have negative effects, not only on health outcomes, but academic outcomes as well. Given that this is an equity issue, and equity is such an integral part of student success, especially at the community college level, the passage of BP and AP 3570 would be a step in the right direction.
Thank you. The next one I have is for Amy Aberron.
Hi. You'll actually have another card with Janet Fantasia. I'm here to represent myself, but also Amy had to leave. You don't have to call me after this. Okay? So thank you to the Board of Trustees and the President and Chancellor Wong. I have something to read. Also, I've been a faculty member here in respiratory care for eight years. I've been in respiratory therapy for 30 years. So you know I obviously support banning smoking on campus. And now I'm going to read what Amy Aberron has to say. She has some important stuff to say. So she also, she has been Director of Health Services for six years. And she's been with the college for 10 years. Prior to that, she was a full-time registered nurse for Health Services. For most of the time, as she has been here as director, at points, the colleagues, the students, and committees have worked hard to update this policy to move it forward. And I am here to speak for her about the role of MJC Health Services in the effort to help support our students here. So we share resources from Kicket, California, the state premier cessation resource. They provide free, clinical-proven programs on cessation from smoking, vaping, and smokeless tobacco with a focus on disproportionately impacted populations. They also provide free communication toolkits and signage to inform and educate our campus community. Health service providers can have the ability to refer students to receive free personal quit plans and trained quit coaches. We offer healthy living presentations here at the college, which are open to the community. And we have covered, and will continue to cover, topics like addiction and tobacco education. We offer on-demand presentations, like getting ready to quit tobacco, puff bars, pouches, pukas today's new nicotine, and setting up a quit plan that will work. We also cover topics on addiction and substance use disorders. We can begin to offer some nicotine replacement therapy to help with the quit efforts, things like patches, Lausengers, and nicotine gum, and provide cessation information and counseling from health services, nurses, and mental health providers, and respiratory therapists on campus. We offer 24/7 unlimited Talk Now self-care modules and one-to-one counseling with timely care, with some providers promoting specialization in substance use disorders and tobacco cessation. We have applied for the CCC... We have applied for the CCCO's program for wellness vending machines. If we are selected, we can explore offering cessation products in these machines to control and easy day and after-hours efforts and access. So we intend to provide ongoing professional development for health services providers, retraining, event opportunities offered by agencies like California Youth Advocacy Network. I'm hoping, or Amy is also hoping, that we shed some light on the questions you may have about how we can support the students with tobacco and smoking independence, or dependence, but we want to get them independent. So the CDC, academic institutions, and other federal and state agencies have done numerous studies on tobacco, chronic disease prevention, health promotion, and the impact of tobacco policy on businesses and community health. Health hazards related to secondhand smoke are well documented. Third-hand smoke too. She doesn't have that on there, but I can vouch for that. Studies show that smoke and tobacco-free laws can motivate and help tobacco users quit and prevent initiation of tobacco use. The implementation of smoke-free laws and policies can increase cessation, reduce smoking prevalence among workers and the general population, and may also reduce smoking initiation among youth. Studies show that smoke-free policies improve air quality, are supported by the public, and they result in high levels of compliance. Smoke-free policies improve community health, and a recent article even stated that from the Modesto B. Several years ago, hospitality services was concerned about the impact on their, impact on their businesses. And the CDC highlighted that studies showed that smoke-free policies do not have an adverse impact on hospitality, hospitality industry. They actually have a positive effect on businesses. So I'm going to conclude with please join our CC colleagues, all the UCs, the CSUs, in recognizing our responsibility to exercise leadership through the creation of a smoke and tobacco-free environment for all students, employees, visitors, at all UC campuses, medical centers, and facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to you and Amy. Next, we have Lydia Gaines.
Hello Board members, Chancellor, and everyone present. My name's Lydia Gaines. I am a registered public health nurse with the MJC Health Services Department, where I've been a part of the team since 2006. I am an MJC alum. I attended Modesto Junior College from the summer of 1980 through the spring of 1983, and I went through the AS nursing program. In 2018, the Modesto Junior College Council voted to establish a smoke-free campus task force to research and provide recommendations to the campus on adopting a smoke-free campus. The task force, led by the now-retired Professor John Zamora, began meeting in May 2020, and I served on the task force for its entirety of two years, meeting monthly and sometimes every other week. During that time, the task force researched what other colleges, college campuses had done, developed recommended policy language, developed a draft webpage, obtained the support of all decision-making bodies on campus, and offered webinars for the campus on the harms of tobacco. One of my projects here in Health Services is facilitating healthy living presentations. I invite presenters from the community to present on an array of topics to our students, staff, and community members via Zoom presentations. Today was tooth decay, and one of our, the former Dr. Glenn Takonaga presented. Members from the task force presented here today, present here today have been part of our healthy living presentations. They have presented on topics such as all about nicotine, why people use it, and how they quit, how to help them quit, getting ready to quit tobacco, puff bars, pouches, hookahs, today's new nicotine and setting up, new nicotine and setting up a quit plan that works. These are all recorded on our Healthy Living webpage and are on demand for anyone to view. These presentations have been well-attended and have motivated some students, not only to begin thinking of quitting smoking, but actually have come into Health Services to pick up smoking quick kits. A lot of these presentations are done around the Great American Smokeout, so they, it's more, they're more, maybe more likely to come in, but they, we do have some motivated students that do come in. The task force has also already committed to being part of the Healthy Living Presentations for the fall of 2023. In early 2022, and due to the, to health issues, John Zamora, our leader for many years, took early retirement. Unfortunately, with his retirement, as well as with the departure of the college president, there has been a gap in leadership and communication with the board on this issue. We've done the work, obtained the approvals needed, and now your vote is, is the next step for, in a long process. So I stand before you this evening as a representative of the task force, asking the board to acknowledge, to help us accomplish all that we have been working towards. Please don't let all our hard work go unnoticed. We would appreciate your support and our efforts in completing this process. In closing, I'd like to quote Dolores Huerta, "Every moment is an organizing opportunity. Every person a potential activist. Every minute a chance to change the world." I would like to encourage the board and all participating parties that are involved in this decision-making process to join me in taking this opportunity to make a change on our campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Next, I have Katie Moose.
Hello. My name is Katie Moose. I work for California. I wanna say Youth Advocacy Network. I work for California Health Collaborative. And just like California Youth Advocacy Network, we also have funding from the state to help you all with like policy implementation, signage, education, getting the word out and stuff like that. So that's why I'm here today. But I also attended MJC. I attended in 2000, from 2000 to 2002. And I smoked on campus. I smoked for eighteen years, and I smoked while I was at MJC. I smoked in the spot that people still smoke at today on East Campus. That's like kind of in the middle, like right by the Student Service Center. And, you know, over my lifetime so far, I've witnessed extraordinary change in social norms around smoking, as I'm sure you all have as well. And, you know, when I was in my twenties and thirties, still smoking, I didn't love all the new no-smoking signs that were popping up everywhere, parks, campuses, hospitals, like you can't smoke anywhere anymore. I didn't, I didn't love that as a smoker. But, you know, now I'm older, and as a mother, I'm, I'm really thankful that this deadly habit that has been passed on generation to generation is finally coming to an end. My grandparents smoked, my parents smoked, me and my brother smoked. And, you know, high school smoking rates were thirty percent when I went to Downey back in the nineties, but now they're down to two percent. And I'm not very worried that my thirteen-year-old daughter is gonna start smoking because it's just, it's not as cool anymore like it was when I was a kid. And smoke-free policies, like the one you're considering today, have played a huge role in changing those social norms. And that's what this policy is all about at MJC. It's, it's really about changing norms, breaking the generational cycle of tobacco use. Your vote today is the last step in a long process that MJC has undergone. So in 2018, the Modesto Junior College Council voted to establish a smoke-free campus task force to look into the possibility of adopting a policy like this. In February of 2020, the Associated Students for Modesto Junior College adopted their resolution 2020-08 for a smoke-free campus. In May of 2020, the MJC Smoke-Free Campus Task Force began meeting, and like Lydia was saying, met over the course of a couple of years. In February of 2022, the MJC Academic Senate adopted Resolution S22-C for a smoke and tobacco-free campus. And then in March of 2022, the College Council for Modesto Junior College adopted their resolution for a smoke and tobacco-free campus. So now, all that's left is for you to adopt the language presented to you today, or ABBP 3750, that would not make both campuses in the district tobacco-free, but would just allow each campus to decide whether or not they would like to do so. And as you guys know, MJC has, you know, already decided that they want to move forward, and Columbia wants to stay with a couple of designated areas, and that's what this policy would allow them to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Peter Gaines. Dr. Peter Gaines.
Hello, MJC Board. My name is Peter Gaines, and I'm a family physician here in Modesto. I have seen firsthand the problems that tobacco has caused my patients. Lung cancer, asthma, emphysema, heart disease, all diagnosed more frequently with smoking, and each with a poorer course with continued smoking. It is well-known that many hospitalizations and deaths are due to smoking. It is fortunate that effective medications are now available for smoking cessation. I was alarmed when I read the Modesto B statistics on Stanislaus County, which has been my home for the last thirty-six years. A 2020-22 report was released by the Stanislaus County Department of Public Health, which showed that smoking rate in Stanislaus County is fourteen percent versus ten percent in the state of California. The cancer death rate is twenty percent higher in Stanislaus County than it is in the state of California. The life expectancy is currently seven years lower in Stanislaus County than in the state of California. It is clear to me that the status quo in Stanislaus County is not working. We must do better. We cannot do the same thing and expect our numbers to improve. Modesto Junior College is in the minority as a California junior college that allows smoking on campus. We know that smoking and secondhand smoke impairs the health of the students on campus. Secondhand smoke increases the risk of lung cancer by twelve percent, diabetes by eight percent, heart disease by four percent, and breast cancer by five percent. That is just secondhand smoke. The risk to the individual is much higher. The board has the opportunity to make a change on campus, which will improve the health of the students and the health of Stanislaus County. The dismal statistics of Stanislaus County will not change through inaction. Secondhand smoke is dangerous to this community. Please make MJC a smoke-free campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think this is my last one. Twila Laster on line. There are two other hands raised, but we can go to Twila. Twila?
Yes, I am here. Good evening, everyone. I am the project director for Saving Our Legacy: African Americans for Smoke-Free Safe Places, the former policy chair of the Stanislaus County TOPPS Coalition, and participated in the Modesto Junior College Smoke-Free Campus Task Force in developing policy language that updated the definition of smoking and aimed to protect the health and well-being of every student, faculty member, and guest that visits the campus from the danger of secondhand smoke. VP and AP 3570 gives the power to each campus in the district to implement smoke-free policies as they see fit. Last year, as mentioned earlier by Katie, the College Council for Modesto Junior College adopted the resolution for a hundred percent smoke-free campus in anticipation of this day. And Columbia is considering policies for designated areas. As you may know, 2018, the Board of Governors for the California Community College System adopted a resolution urging all California community colleges to adopt and implement a hundred percent smoke and tobacco-free policy, just as all California State Universities and University of California campuses have already done. So the research has been conducted, policy language has been recommended, and support has obviously been obtained from students, faculty, and all the decision-making bodies in advance of supplying you with the information on this opportunity to give each campus the power to make their own policy decisions through 3570. Furthermore, smoke-free policies help reduce tobacco product waste on campuses, and it makes it easier for those who want to quit. So thank you for your continued consideration of regulations that protect the health and well-being of everyone that visits community college campuses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can't read the names from here. Right, I'll let you know. So the next one is Ediberto Fuentes.
Hello, yes, this is Ediberto Fuentes. And I'm a Stanislaus State College Court Fellow, working in conjunction with Noah Hughes and Ludy Lanchester and the rest of CSTF. Me and my partner Antonio have been asked to shepherd MJC through the STARS process, the goal in which is to help our college set and meet sustainability goals while fostering collaboration and information sharing across our campus. In addition to the benefits mentioned by others tonight in regards to making MJC tobacco-free, I'd like to add that the STARS report awards have a point for an institution that prohibits smoking and tobacco use across campus. These, these points are important, and our current goal of obtaining at least Bronze status rating, as we are currently short of points. The ratings of the STARS report include reporter status, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, in that order. Thank you for listening, and please take this into consideration when voting on a tobacco-free campus.
Thank you. Next speaker, Faray Mulana Zada. Hopefully I said that correctly.
Yeah, it's Freddie Ha. Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Freddie Ha Mulana Zada. I'm a student at the University of California, Berkeley, and I'm the president of the Young Adults Fighting Tobacco Coalition. I'm a former student at MJC who graduated in 2021 and was the former president of the MJC Pre-Hold Club and a member of the Smoke-Free Campus Task Force. As a member of YAF Coalition, Young Adults Fighting Tobacco, I'm here today to share some of my experience as a student impacted by tobacco. And I asked the Yosemite Community College District to support a smoke-free policy. When I was a student in MJC, I used to pass by smoking area in the East Campus, and I would see students smoking in the designated smoking area that was closer to the student center. Seeing students smoke on campus not only made me concerned for them, but for myself and my peers who were exposed to secondhand smoke. I was mostly concerned about my best friend was also a student at MJC and had asthma. Each time I would head to my history class, I wished the designated smoking areas were not there because that same beautiful green area could be a place of refuge to many students like me who dealt with stresses that come with college classes. We all have been there. Similarly, volunteering for the Great American Smokeout Day event in 2019 with Katie, who's present here, was an eye-opening experience for me. We gave around, we gave out around two hundred quick kits while challenging smokers on campus to quit smoking for twenty-four hours. And listening to their stories helped me know more about the suffering caused by tobacco use. Now that I have transferred to a smoke-free campus and I'm studying at UC Berkeley, I can see how much of a difference a smoke-free campus makes. While I'm no longer concerned about my health, I'm worried about my seventeen-year-old cousin who will be attending MJC this upcoming fall, since she is graduating from high school. I'm worried because I know secondhand smoking can impact her physical, physical health since she has underlying conditions that put her at the high risk, as well as her mental health and social well-being. I'm also worried for those students who are current smokers, who are smoking at MJC at those designated areas and would have to go through a hard transition once they transfer to a smoke-free university, such as the UCs and CSUs. I care about the health and well-being of students who will attend MJC this year and the upcoming years, long after I'm gone. And that's why I keep, I keep coming to these meetings. Having lost my family members who are addicted to back, to tobacco. Having lost my family members who are addicted to tobacco and having seen my father go through a very hard heart surgery due to smoking has made me aware of the long-term effects of tobacco use and made me concerned for other youth who start smoking and those who are exposed to secondhand exposure at Modesto Junior College. I believe in you all. I believe in the YCCD board members. And I know you will consider the safety of MJC students as you make a decision tonight. I hope you consider passing smoke-free policy, because no student should choose between their education and health. And community college students deserve to study in a safe environment, same as all UC students do. Thank you for having me and listening to my public comments.
Thank you.
That appeared to be the last raised hand on Zoom.
Okay. So the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees conducts a third reading and approves YCCD Policy 3570 as attached.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we need a roll call vote.
Can we discuss this first?
We can.
I think I've made my position pretty clear, and I don't believe that the policy before us tonight goes far enough. I think we stand up here and have ability to be a leader and be a leader for our students, our community, and for the overall public health of those same individuals. There's language in there about consulting with affected constituencies. We've done that. This has been out for many years now, as you heard tonight, with academic senate, with our student leaders, student body, our employee organizations, members of the community. And we've heard from them. And if we're a listening body, we would have listened and taken that into consideration and passed an absolute ban. We're, in my opinion, we're passing this off to college presidents, who, in my opinion, have enough on their plate than having to meet with constituency groups and decide whether we're going to be a smoke-free campus or not. There's language in there about 20 feet. Having dealt with this issue for public money, 20 feet is not enough. You have open windows. There's language in there about that. Who's going to police that? Those carcinogens go right into the building through open windows and other HVAC systems, and there they stay, and it goes into the classrooms, and people have to breathe that. If you've ever had a chance to look at someone who has died from a lifelong history of smoking, it would really open your eyes to the impacts of smoking and how powerless these individuals are when they get addicted to nicotine. Severe COPD, severe emphysema is a hard thing to look at. When I spent my life as an autopsy assistant for Stanislaus County, it is sickening, and these people are powerless to get away from it. You would be shocked, as the physician pointed out, that Stanislaus County's mortality rate is tied to some of the most poorest areas of this country. There's a saying in the actuarial sciences that says, "Wealth versus health." Well, not in this county. We buck the trend. It goes in the opposite direction. I can't support a business model that preys on the disadvantaged. I can't support a business model that targets people of African-American descent with the production of menthol cigarettes. I can't support a business model that allows our service member, men and women, for decades by providing free cigarettes on military bases and in their own food rations to then get those people addicted to cigarettes. I cannot support that. This does not go far enough. But if it moves the needle and gets us to a smoke-free campus, I guess I'll have to take what I can take. But I'm disappointed that we are not being a listening body and listening over many years and have taken a role of leadership in protecting our students and the community and having an absolute ban of smoking and tobacco products on our campus. Thank you.
Any other comments? Turn your mic on.
We had asked our legal to look at this procedure or policy and to help us to write it up to where it would lead us to a permanent smoke-free policy here at MJC. And this is what's written. There is, as most of you have said, that you're aware that there is a procedure that we have to follow. We can't just say tonight that tomorrow we're going to be smoke-free. There's a policy that needs to go through, notifications need to go out, and that's what we're working for. I know Dr. Peter Gaines. I worked with him many years ago. And he can attest to the fact that I am a very severe asthmatic. So I've been against the smoking on campus. Fortunately, most of my time on campus in the last six years has been at night or later in the afternoon, when there haven't been a lot of classes and a lot of students smoking on campus. But I do remember when I went here as a snooten, going in through Founder's Hall, if you didn't go through the one side, you were walking through a chimney. So I'm asking my fellow board members to pass this as our step towards making MJC a smoke-free campus. And the reason why we're not pushing for Columbia to do the same is because of the fact that our students who smoke will be able to go off-campus and smoke. Students at Columbia would be in the forest, smoking, and could very easily start a forest fire. So saving our forest, they have special, excuse me, special incinerary devices that will keep the cigarette butts out of harm's way. So just so you know why we're not asking for Columbia to do the same thing. There was a reason. Thank you.
So the language that was posted up did have a change that was made today to the policy. So I just want to make sure that the approval is the request for that version. Yes.
The motion that was made was saying that it's attached, and we want to make sure that it's the amended version that's being provided to the Board. Yes. That's the only clarification I wanted to.
Yeah, I'm just getting to my spot. Give me one moment. Thank you. Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
And Trustee Garrett?
No.
The vote is six in favor. One opposed. Motion carries.
All right, you're now going to move on to second readings, 8.2.
Thank you so much, Chair. President Beggs, sorry. There are nine policies before you for second reading, and the Board Policy Committee have recommended revisions to Policies 2110, 2200, and 2210. Additionally, the Board Policy Committee, along with the Human Resources Department, they are recommending that Policy 7340 be pulled and sent for legal review by our General Counsel. Any questions over the policies?
So I need a motion.
So moved.
So is the motion to pull that one?
Yes.
To refer that and to approve all the others?
Yes.
Okay, that's our motion. I need a second. Second from Antonio.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
You go back to him.
Oh, okay. Pardon me, I didn't realize. President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
I can mark Vice President Richards not present for vote. The vote is six in favor, zero opposed, one not present for vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, for 8.3, it's a first reading. The recommended action is that we conduct a first reading on 7270, 7337, 7380, and 7500. Those are... We don't need to vote on that.
No, we need to... There was some recommended revisions to...
Okay.
That the Board would need to just make sure that they are approving to move, not proving, but accepting the amendments from the recommendations from the Policy Committee. And those are to Policy 7270, 7380, and 7500, which were provided to you.
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
All right. So going on.
If I may, President Beggs, just item 7.9. So I know that that motion failed. Is there direction from the Board on how to move forward? Just so that I can get that for the record. I know there was no discussion, so is it?
I think we need to talk to legal, maybe?
Is it?
I don't know what the process is in that situation.
So would you just like some responses with regards to the comment that was made? More information?
Okay, let's ask for more information.
No, I was just inquiring if there's more information with respect to the comment that was made to bring back to the Board at a future meeting.
Well, and I was just discussing with Trevor. This has to be done by the 15th, so this is the last opportunity to approve it, and it has failed. So I guess that is... You don't need any further guidance, then?
No, no, ma'am. And this, you know, it's a lack of work, lack of funding, ma'am. It was not funded outright by the institution. It was actually funded by the Association of Students. And as a result, that funding has ceased. Therefore, the institution, the district, cannot support the position with the funding we do have at this point, looking down the road.
But I think we've clearly said we're not going to do that, so they need to find the money and not eliminate the position. Period. The vote was almost unanimous. So I think it's up to the person in that area to find the money and keep the position. Like, we set that message rather clearly.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other? No? Okay. All right. Next up is the recommended action. This is 8.4, I think. The Board of Trustees change the location of the YCCD Regular Board of Trustees Meeting on April 12th and May 10th to the Yosemite Community College District Office, again because of the lack of equipment.
So moved.
And I would assume that if there's some surprisingly early delivery and it's installed, we can revisit this.
I'll second the motion.
I heard overlapping voices, so can you clarify?
I think Trustee Nicolau was ahead of me, and I'll graciously take the second on that.
Thank you for that clarification. Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar? Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton? Your microphone for just...
Aye.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
The vote is 7-0. Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next is 8.5, the CCT Board of Directors Election. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees each complete a ballot indicating their preferences and forward the ballot by April 8th. And the Chancellor's office will compile our votes and send them off. So we don't need to take a vote on that. We're just agreeing to do that, correct?
If you can move it forward so that we can forward whatever the results are to the CCT?
Or we are moving it forward.
If we can get a vote, that would be great.
So moved, and I've already completed my ballot and forwarded it back to you, Rosyella, so happy to report that.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Do you have any seconds?
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar? Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous. Motion carries.
All right. 8.6, nomination for the State Board of Governors 2023 Classified Employee of the Year Award. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees endorses one YCCD Classified Staff Member nomination for the State Board of Governors Classified Employees of the Year Award, and B, direct staff to forward that nomination to the Board of Governors and the Foundation for California Community Colleges by the deadline.
So moved.
Second?
I second the motion.
Trustee Aguilar? Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous. Motion carries.
All right, 8.7 is an academic calendar revision. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopts the updated 2023-2024 Academic Calendar for Columbia College and Modesto Junior College as attached to the March 8th, 2023 Agenda.
So moved. Second?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there discussion?
I like it.
Gone as quick as a born. Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
And Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Motion carries.
All right, next up is 8.8, Columbia College Guiding Statements. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approve Columbia College's guiding statements, reaffirmed by the Columbia College Council on February 3rd of 2023.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion, comments? I think not.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Motion, or the vote is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, 8.9, our CCAP Agreements. How many pages did you say they would have been if they had been printed?
247.
Right. So they are not part of our 140...
They were part of the online version that the Board has access to.
Our regular agenda was 143 pages, so that would have been a suitcase.
Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Madam President. It's no secret that Trustee Aguilar and I have been very vocal in discussing what we're doing with our high schools. And I really want to applaud the Chancellor for recruiting consultants and getting this together. And I want to thank the YFA and our faculty members for coming to an agreement. And I just think this is really a tremendous thing. You know, we went from a terrible newspaper article about how... You know, we went from a terrible newspaper article about how bad we are to now really positive, and I just think this is, this is so good for underrepresented communities, it gives everyone an opportunity to start their college career, and I emphatically move we approve this.
Yes. And before you do that, I want to read the names. This is, these are agreements with Aspire Public Schools, Series United, Unified School District, Hillmar Unified School District, Houston Unified School District, Modesto City Schools, Patterson Unified School District, Ripon Unified School District, Turlock Unified School District, and Waterford Unified School District. So well done. Thank you also to the Chancellor.
Trustee Hinton?
Is this supposed to be a public hearing?
Yes, there are.
Oh, yes. Public comment.
Is there any public comment? Again, I can't see that very well.
Oh, no.
There are no raised hands on Zoom. And nobody rushing to the podium.
Okay. All right.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Enthusiastically, yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguillache?
Yes.
Love the enthusiasm. Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Next is eight point ten, the MJC Presidential Search. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees discusses the MJC Presidential Search process and provides direction to staff regarding the firm's selection process, and two, that the Board President, in consultation with the Chancellor, identifies a Board Ad-hoc Committee to review search firm proposals.
Motion to approve?
So I don't think this requires any action of the Board?
Very good, thank you.
The President and the Chancellor can identify the ad hoc committee at a later time?
I have that. Ready to go. So that doesn't.
If there's any further dis.
Meeting then, is there any discussion? No? Okay. All right. Nine point one is a request for future Board Agenda items.
I'm going to request again, the same as last month, um, we can get on the agenda soon, is dealing with the um cost for housing for MJC through the Lutheran Church Monthly Payment Plan.
Anybody else have an item? Darren?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to have our, our Director, or District Director of Facilities to come before this Board uh next month and give a report on um the infrastructure issues on the West Campus. Because, uh, again, I think we owe it to our students, our staff, and the community that we address these items. I think it's gonna shock you, and I think it's gonna be a, a little higher of priority than, than uh, uh, you know, the, the ten-year track of an MJC President, uh, because uh this is, this is serious stuff. And um, I think, uh, for Vice Chancellor Stewart, I think at some point, um, I think after that discussion, I think we should have a conversation about doing some sort of infrastructure bond, uh, because I think once we get that report, that you're, we're gonna find out pretty quick what we're gonna need, and it's gonna be expensive, so that's my request.
Anybody else? Um, I have one. I heard that the Speech Department, I think, wants to make a presentation to the Board, so I'm hoping, Alan, do you know about that?
At the moment, the team is preparing for uh national competition, and it is taking up all their focus. I'll take the opportunity here to note that last year, our MJC's forensics speech competition team won the National Cumulative Sweepstakes Award. That's over all the competition of community colleges across the country, and so at this time, they're getting ready to go compete again. And I'll be getting back to you, and thank you for your inquiry.
Great, thank you. So at some future date, as yet to be determined. All right. Um, next up, nine point two, comments from the Board of Trustees. We could start with Antonio.
Um, just a quick comment on the CCAP agreement. I'm just really glad that, together with Dimitri and everybody, they made it work happen, and I really appreciate how you guys is hard work. Thank you.
John?
Thank you. There you are. Okay, my turn. All right, uh, I want to say thank you to Dean Donald Borges, the Dean of Ag Environmental Sciences. He, uh, took me on a tour of the facilities on both West and East Campus, the, the farm, the livestock areas, the irrigation, and just shared with me the, the breadth of the educational opportunities in this department, and I was thoroughly impressed. And uh, as was mentioned last month, he is retiring, uh, as our dean, but man, he is sure proud of the, the work that's going on out there, as he should be. Had the opportunity to meet some of our students, have a brief conversation with them, and they are enthusiastic, thick ambassadors of our college, and I just really enjoyed that visit. I want to thank the Chancellor and Dr. Tran for uh the partnerships that you're developing with Apple Education and Google, and, and how you're really going to, I don't know, open maybe the, the, the eyes of opportunity to high school students, and I, that was one of the, the things we heard tonight, that what are we doing with our, our feeder districts to show them opportunities that exist uh here in a twenty-first century and twenty-first century work environment? I just really appreciate that, that effort that you're making. The CCAP Agreement's wonderful. I want to do a shout-out for bringing back the Jazz Festival. I actually played in the Jazz Festival as a member of the MJC Night Jazz Band. It was my first visit to Columbia College, and I fell in love with the campus up there through that experience, and it's, it's coming back wonderful. I'm sure I'm going to make it up there to, to listen to those performances. I want to appreciate, uh, express appreciation for everyone that's serving on the accreditation. Uh, I had served on multiple high school accreditation teams and have been a chair of visiting committees to go, who would go out and, and support accreditations at that level, and I can appreciate the amount of work that's going in to that and say thank you here tonight. I want to thank our Policy Committee for all the work that you do on our policies, how you consider each one thoroughly, take all the input that you do, and advise the Board in the way that you do. Thank you for the work that you're doing, my fellow Board members, and also everyone from the faculty and all who, um, participate in that effort. And thank you for sharing about the sports team. Ten wrestlers qualified, that means one per, that's, there's ten weight classes, I mean, the whole team went, so, um, well done there. So thanks for sharing that, um, President Redwing, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I'd like to go to our student trustee next.
Hello, good night, everybody. First and foremost, I want to say Happy Women's Day. For all those strong women, we know them, we work with them, we may be them, we, we raise them, and we were raised by women. To start with my report, uh, I'm very glad to hear about the new projects for ASCC and hope that everybody's doing fine up there with this cold. I, as well, I'm glad to hear about the different events that are going on both on Columbia College and MJC. And for those who have a long drive home, I hope that you all get, well, go home safely. And that would be my report for this committee meeting, I mean, Board meeting, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, the meetings run together for me sometimes, too. Thank you very much. Jenny?
No comment.
No, from Nancy shaking her head at me.
I commented earlier.
Okay, no.
Yes, I want to, I want to thank Congressman Harder and Senator Padilla for funding an excellent proposal that was put together by Chancellor Young, our, our public relations firm, Townsend Associates. The two million dollars is really going to improve our, uh, fire program, and I look forward to a greater cooperation with the Modesto Fire Department, and think a lot of good things are, are ahead.
House Chair Garrett? Nothing? Okay. Okay. I've, I've had so many meetings, I've lost count, but, um, including one from Menifee, that was fun, in a conference room where the lights kept going off and I, the wifi kept going out, so I got to jump up and turn the lights back on, it was fun. But anyway, um, it's probably good exercise. I went to the Innovation Showcase, which has been Chad's baby for a while, and saw the awards given to the teams who were solving problems, and it was wonderful. It's, it's what we're about. Students getting engaged, they were excited, I had dinner with two of them, they were just so on fire for what they're doing, and I, I loved it. So that was great. I also want to give a shout-out to the accreditation team. That's kind of like policy work, it, you know, you, it's not, there's no glamour to it, but we really appreciate it. And um, I think that's it for me, and just thanks to everybody who's here. All right. So our next meeting will be, um, if, unless Gracia tells me, I've forgotten something. Our next regular meeting will be held, um, this has to be wrong because it says February eighth.
Your, your, pardon me, your printed.
Looking at the wrong.
Your printed version was incorrect, but it was corrected online. The next regular meeting is April twelfth.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-three, closed session at three, open session at five-thirty, and it says Manzanita, but it.
Will be here.
Board action will be here at the District Office.
Right. Unless Scotty beams in the new equipment. All right. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned at eight, seven forty-seven.
I feel like sixty point now.
Good one?
We won by sixty.
Excellent. Holy cow.
It went pretty well.
Thing is, I knew it was gonna pass, but I couldn't say that because that would be a violation of the Brown Act, because.